Good afternoon. The time now is for 11:00 on May 3, 2024. I would like to call for a special meeting. Meeting called to order. Rule call please.
Mayor Nguyen.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Ho.
She is, I got a call from her just now. She is on her way. Her call broke down and she says she'll be here in five or 10 minutes.
Perfect. Councilwoman Phan West.
Yes.
Councilmember Monsa.
Here.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
I'm here.
Thank you. You have called, right? All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just before we go into the meeting, I just want to let you know that there was an issue subject to be discussed today that came up a few days ago regarding to the supervisor in Los Angeles. The subject is going to be discussed, but I just wanted to let you know that the reason for their special meeting was the matter is very sensitive to the Vietnamese community. And if we wait until the next meeting, which is on May 8, which is not going to happen because our policy is that we need to have the item in the agenda on the 25th, which is not going to happen for the next meeting, which is for the May 5th. So if we wait until the next meeting, it's even further away. And so that was the reason why this meeting has been called as a special meeting. And so now I would like to open for oral communication. And this oral communication for the agenda item only, please. There is no, I understand what you want, but there is no, I don't know why we don't have the...
The flag?
Yeah, for special means, we don't have the separate public comment if that's what you're talking about.
I'm talking about, I think they want to...
Yeah, the agenda does not have the pledge.
Why didn't we have that? Well, with that, I will modify the agendas a little bit, so why don't we all stand up for the pledge of allegiance? Can you lead us on the pledge of allegiance, Councilmember Monsa?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Monsa. And again, I just want to, Vice Mayor Ho wanted me to convey the message to you that she's on her way here. And I would like to open for oral communication. Before I do that, I would also want to let you know that when this issue arise, there are a number of concerns from the council here. And really, it's kind of urgent for them to discuss about these issues. And I mentioned that we can't wait. And also include that Councilmember West also want to have a special meeting. But for a council to call a special meeting is not going to happen unless they have three, and they can't communicate with the three. And with the mayor duties, I can call for special meeting. So that's why we have a special meeting today. And now I would like to open the oral communication. And I want to remind you that this is a special meeting, so we are only talking on the subject matter, which is the resolution denouncing the designation of April 30 as changed from the day by the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisor and request for immediate resistance. Right now, let me open the oral communication, but I ask that city clerk, city manager, can you go ahead and read the instruction into the record, please?
Thank you. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding items on the agenda. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the city council, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the city council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance of the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk or city manager today. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Thank you. Have we have any who want to sign up to speak today?
We do. We probably have about 15 cards right now.
Go ahead and call for the first speaker.
Yes, sir. First speaker is Michael Vrangia.
Wow, he's come to the podium. I would like to welcome our former city mayor, Mayor Truita, now Assembly, State Assembly Truita. Thank you. Please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't see you. He had signed up, I didn't see him, so sorry, okay.
All right. Okay, Michael.
Thank you. Couple things here. First of all, Jane Fonda is not one of my favorite people for obvious reasons. Anybody that served in the military during that time essentially considers her and her former husband, thankfully he's not here, Tom Hayden, they're both traitors. But having called this meeting, you could have done the very same thing by having the mayor draft a letter on behalf of the entire council. Our legislative representative is here. He could have done a letter. We could have had Janet Nguyen do a letter. And all of the Vietnamese politicians do the very same thing. Vietnamese organizations, their military organizations, civic organizations, and send them up to the people in Los Angeles who obviously don't have brain one in their skulls to pick April 30 to honor Jane Fonda because of her climate change activism. That doesn't erase what she did. And not only did she go over there, she caused American POWs to be beaten and tortured when they tried to give a message to her and Tom Hayden to get back to the States to advise who was being held captive. The two of them promptly turned it over to the communist troops, which meant that those American POWs that they were able to identify were beaten and tortured. So this woman doesn't deserve attention, period. But this meeting really shouldn't have had to take place. And as I said, you could have drafted a very nice letter demanding that they change and directing them to at least have some consideration for the Vietnamese people that now live in this country and specifically here in Southern California who remember this. Well, you guys were a little bit older. She wasn't, she wasn't even born yet, but you would have remembered that time. And it's not something that you really want to revisit for all the things that your families, your grandparents went through at that time and you yourselves may have gone through. But I think it's kind of a waste of time and everybody's effort. But get all the Vietnamese politicians together, the civic groups, the military groups, everybody draft correspondence and send it up to the morons up in Los Angeles to that board of supervisors. And I'm not even going to go on from there because I can't stand them anyway. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Assemblyman Truita. Apologize for that.
It's not an issue, yeah. Good afternoon, the honorable mayor and member of the city council. I am Assemblyman Truita. First, I would like to thanks the mayor of the city council for calling this special meeting. I really, really appreciate your leadership and dedication. I read a staff report and I honestly want to thank, I want to thank our city manager for doing her research of the issue. Two days ago, you all were that I issued my press release to call Los Angeles Board Supervisor to rescind their proclamation that that is April 30 to honor pro-communist Hanoi, Jane Fonda, and my office also readed a petition for people to sign to oppose that proclamation. I want to recognize the city of Westminster for standing with the community by organizing the annual Black April commemoration. The Black April is a sad day for the Vietnamese-American community and the Vietnamese overseas. And on that day, we always honor the sacrifices of 58,000 American soldier and more than 250,000 South Vietnam soldier who fought side by side during the Vietnam War. Like I said, in the Black April commemoration last year, we lost Saigon, but we didn't lose our fighting spirit. And this issue, I believe, will bring all of us together. This issue unite us, and I believe the city of Westminster will stand with the community to send the resolution to denounce the action, the Los Angeles Board Supervisor, and request them to rescind that proclamation. And I respectfully ask for your approval on your proposed resolution. Thank you.
Next speaker is Howie Tu.
What's her name again?
Howie.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I am Howie Tu, Office of Assemblyman Truita, Vietnam Human Rights Liaison. However, today I am here at the Westminster residence to express my disbelief at the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisor, Jane Fonda represent a dark chapter in American history. Although she may have been young and impressionable, she served at a communist malfeasance for the North Vietnamese evil regime. Choosing to honor her on April 30 were a horrible decision. The Los Angeles County Board of Supervisor is incredibly out of touch and totally abandoned the Vietnamese community as well as American service member that lost their life fighting in freedom overseas. Dishonoring their service is unfuturistic.
Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Castle Member Menzo. And again, I just want to, Vice Mayor Ho wanted me to convey a message to you that he's on the way here. And I would like to open for oral communication. Before I do that, I would want to let you know that when this issue arise, there are a number of concerns from their, from the castle here. And they really, it's kind of urgent for them to discuss about these issues. And I mentioned that we can't wait. And also include that Castle Member West also want to have a special meeting. But for a council to call a special meeting is not going to happen unless they have three, and they can't communicate with the three. And with the mayor duties, I can call for special meeting. So that's why we have a special meeting today. And now I would like to open the oral communication, and I want to remind you that this is a special meeting, so we are only talking on the subject matter, which is the resolution denouncing the designation of April 30th as changed from the day by the last year last County Board of Supervisor and request for immediate resistance. Right now, let me open the oral communication, but I ask that city clerk, city manager, can you go ahead and read the instruction into the record, please?
Thank you. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding items on the agenda. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the city council, comment shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the city council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance of the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk or city manager today. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Thank you. Have we have any who want to sign up for to speak today?
We do. We do. We probably have about 15 cards right now.
Go ahead and call for the first speaker.
Yes, sir. First speaker is Michael Verangia.
Wow, he's come to the podium. I would like to welcome our former city mayor, Mayor Truta, now Assembly, State Assembly Truta. Thank you.
Is he here?
Please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. He, I didn't, I didn't see you. He had signed up, I didn't see him, so sorry, okay.
All right. Okay, Michael.
Thank you. Couple things here. First of all, Jane Fonda is not one of my favorite people for obvious reasons. Anybody that served in the military during that time essentially considers her and her former husband, thankfully, he's not here, Tom Hayden, they're both traitors. But having called this meeting, you could have done the very same thing by having the mayor draft a letter on behalf of the entire council. Our legislative representative is here, he could have done a letter, we could have had Janet Winn do a letter, and all of the Vietnamese politicians do the very same thing, Vietnamese organizations, their military organizations, civic organizations, and send them up to the people in Los Angeles who obviously don't have brain one in their skulls to pick April 30th to honor Jane Fonda because of her climate change activism. That doesn't erase what she did. And not only did she go over there, she caused American POWs to be beaten and tortured when they tried to give a message to her and Tom Hayden to get back to the States to advise who was being held captive. The two of them promptly turned it over to the communist troops, which meant that those American POWs that they were able to identify were beaten and tortured. So this woman doesn't deserve attention, period. But this meeting really shouldn't have had to take place. And as I said, you could have drafted a very nice letter demanding that they change and directing them to at least have some consideration for the Vietnamese people that now live in this country and specifically here in Southern California who remember this. Well, you guys were a little bit older, she wasn't, she wasn't even born yet, but you would have remembered that time, and it's not something that you really want to revisit for all the things that her families, your grandparents went through at that time, and you yourselves may have gone through. But I think it's kind of a waste of time and everybody's effort. But get all the Vietnamese politicians together, the civic groups, the military groups, everybody draft correspondence and send it up to the morons up in Los Angeles, to that Board of Supervisors, and I'm not even going to go on from there because I can't stand them anyway. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Assemblyman Truta. Apologize for that.
It's not an issue, yeah. Good afternoon, the Honorable Mayor and Member of the City Council. I am Assemblyman Truta. First, I would like to thanks the Mayor and City Council for calling this special meeting. I really, really appreciate your leadership and dedication. I read a staff report, and I honestly want to thank, I want to thank our city manager for doing her research of the issue. Two days ago, you all were that I issued my press release to call Los Angeles Board Supervisor to rescind their proclamation that that is April 30th to honor communist Hanoi, Jane Fonda, and my office also re-added a petition for people to sign to oppose that proclamation. I want to recognize the City of Westminster for standing with the community by organizing the annual Black April Commemoration. The Black April is a sad day for the Vietnamese-American community and the Vietnamese overseas. And on that day, we always honor the sacrifices of 58,000 American soldier and more than 250,000 South Vietnam soldier who fought side by side during the Vietnam War. Like I said, in the Black April Commemoration last year, we lost Saigon, but we didn't lose our fighting spirit. And this issue, I believe, will bring all of us together. This issue unite us, and I believe the City of Westminster will stand with the community to send the resolution to denounce the action, the Los Angeles Board Supervisor, and request them to rescind that proclamation. And I respectfully ask for your vote on your proposed resolution. Thank you.
Next speaker is Howie Tu.
What's the name again?
Howie.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I am Howie Tu, Office of Assemblyman Truta, Vietnam Human Rights Liaison. However, today I am here at the Westminster residence to express my disbelief at the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisor, Jane Fonda represent a dark chapter in American history. Although she may have been young and impressionable, she served at a communist malfeasance for the North Vietnamese evil regime. Choosing to honor her on April 30th were a horrible decision. The Los Angeles County Board of Supervisor is incredibly out of touch and totally abandoned the Vietnamese community as well as American service member that lost their life fighting in freedom overseas. Dishonoring their service is unfuturistic and reopen the wound of war. I thank to the City of Westminster for taking this issue on and sending a message to Los Angeles County that their decision was real consequence for Vietnamese-American. Thank you.
Next speaker, next speaker is Ronald Guyer.
My name is Ronald Guyer.
It's on that one. Oh, if you can go to the other mic, the one of the, there you go.
Oh.
The tall one.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, that's much better. Now I can hear myself, thank, as well. I'm a veteran of the first major battles of the Vietnam War. The movie We Were Soldiers, Mel Gibson played Hal Moore, and I was a ready man driver orderly to him directly. I got to see everything directly in the first major battle of the Vietnam War, and I got to see what it's really like to have people out there against us who love to kill. I say that again, they love it. They absolutely love it. The people that are against the free people, hating the free for being free, that's what I witnessed firsthand. You have just made a move that is timely and the right move. It is tremendous because finally, after 50-plus years, with Jane Fonda getting her way on television, all of us in this country and the world got to see law enforcement taking over people who are lawless in, at UCLA. Very, very timely. It's perfect for what you want to do. As far as we veterans are concerned, we've had to live with her negativity, and I call it hate, direct personal hate, because everything we did was wrong for her. And we were doing everything right, because the one thing the love itself needs more in this world for God is love, is more love, and that only comes when people are free. Was it our job as soldiers or Marines, whatever, to protect those that are free, bring more freedom to the world? For the one thing the love itself needs more in this world is more love, and that only comes when people are free. And so the people that are not, are godless, who love to kill, act that way, act that way. And now you have your moment with Jane Fonda. You've got it. You're right there, because it's, it's not only veterans. People have been lied to on television over 50-plus years by Jane Fonda. She's saying that she's just about ready to die because she has cancer, but she's blaming at her, blaming her cancer on our driving a car. In other words, the environment's killing her, okay? Negative lie, okay? Never heard that before, okay? She hasn't changed. Now it's time to get her, throw it in her face, like the LAPD did on, at UCLA at 3:00 in the morning, bringing, bringing real concrete justice. Thank you.
Next speaker, next speaker is Tammy Hamel.
Hello, Tammy Hamel, Westminster resident. First I'll say, I agree with everything Michael Verangia said. Jane Fonda's garbage. Having a dad who was a veteran, a Vietnam veteran, I grew up knowing what she did, that, that's the same information I always heard. I know she put people's lives in danger, she got people tortured. She's garbage. I don't agree, I don't know why they did this. Probably stupid move, especially around this time, because with all the dates flying around, I understand what that means. But this meeting, this has nothing to do with Westminster. This special meeting did not need to be called. I also agree with what he said about how it could have been handled. If you could do a special meeting and have this written up so quickly, you could have gotten it on next week's agenda. It was done in what, a couple of days? You could have had it on next week's agenda. There's no reason, there's no reason the special meeting need to be called. And I'll also say, there are things that have happened with people on this council that have not been addressed, that I feel is dangerous language that's used, that happens in Westminster. I recall in 2019, there was a resolution written because community activists were involved in the recall, and you all called them that they were working for the Hanoi regime. You think that wasn't dangerous? The language he uses, the language she uses, you never call any of that out. But this, which has nothing to do with Westminster specifically, it was something LA County did, and like you said, all those things could have been written up. That all gets ignored, but you call a special meeting using our city resources, probably stressing out staff to get it done so quickly, but nothing that happens with this council like that has been addressed. Why not? Dangerous language is dangerous language. They've used it, saying that residents were working for the Hanoi regime just because they were doing a recall? That's dangerous language, correct? That has never been addressed. That resolution has never been called back to say, maybe we made a mistake, maybe we shouldn't have done that. Where's that? That actually affected Westminster residents because of the language that was used. I was also reminded that there were other certificates given to people in Vietnam by, I believe, you Charlie and the previous mayor, that people questioned what their involvement was as far as being involved with the Communist Party over there. So that's never been called back to question that, see if that was maybe the wrong thing to do. None of that has been addressed.
Next speaker is John Baker.
My name is John Baker. I've lived in Orange County for about 30 years. Before that, I was living in the jungles of Vietnam outside of Da Nang in Chulai and Westaway City. I lived in the jungle, ate cold sea rats. I was in a reconnaissance unit that spied on the bad guys, the communists, and tried to get information back to the main units and try to get a prisoner whenever we could. But I'm not here to talk about that. I went to a, we, we got out of the bush, we got to take showers for the first time, and we got to go to a Christmas presentation by Bob Hope, and Ann Margaret was there with some other hot babes, and we thought it was the greatest thing ever, and we thought America was really behind us. Two weeks later, I get a newspaper with a big pictorial in it, and guess who's on the pictorial?
Jane Fonda.
The Hollywood traitor. And we were stunned, we were shocked and so disgusted that we're out in the woods and guys are dying and, and fighting with the Vietnamese, the Kit Carson scouts we used and going way out in the jungles and coming back to that. A month later after that, I get a message from home, and usually the mail was late and the, the papers were late getting to us, but this was a giant picture of a 50-caliber machine gun, dual 50-caliber machine gun called a Ma-Deus. Most of you veterans know what I'm talking about. And guess who's sitting in the gun turret with a Pith helmet on, with a star in the middle of the Pith helmet?
Hanoi Jane.
The Hollywood traitor. And to show you how emotional it was for many of us when we started to rotate home, we were all sitting around drinking beer one night, and we were getting fired up, especially about the sweetheart there. And we had a top 10 list that if we got a terminal illness when we got back to the United States, we were going to take a few with us. Huey Newton of the Black Panthers, Angela Davis of the Black Panthers, Mark Rudd from the Students for More Democratic Society, and all these big, you know, protests going on back then. It was, it was amazing to us that Jane Fonda was right in the middle of a lot of it. So have I seen a Jane Fonda movie in the last 40 years? No. Will I ever buy one of her CDs or DVDs or anything like that? Not only no, but hell no. And I'll go to LA with the rest of you, and we'll talk about this. And this is so great to see a city council like this and 34 people here tonight. This is the American way to make things happen and make changes. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Tony Buie.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, and all staff of the City of Westminster. I come here, and first of all, I would like to appreciate the effort of the mayor and all of you who has made this meeting come true at the right time, right place for all of us to come here to express ourselves toward the decision of the Los Angeles Board of Supervisor. I thought their decision was totally stupid. Stupidity has made them to decided that the April 30th is the Jane Fonda Day. We should call it Jane Fonda Tainted Blood of US Soldiers and of Innocent Peoples Days, that Jane Fonda Tainted Day. So today I recommend all of you to put the effort to take away that proclamation of the city of Los Angeles. Because of what? Because they have doing that for political purpose. And also they try to step on the, the death of 58,000 US soldiers and millions of innocent people who, who has tried to fight freedom and lost their life on, in the ocean, in the jungles. So together, we should sign the proclamation as a Black Friday for all the people to commemorate the death of soldiers who have sacrificed for freedom, democracy, and integrity for all of us. So today, I would like to send a message to the Los Angeles Board Supervisor, who had failed to maintain Los Angeles as a safe place for its all residents. Los Angeles is going down the drain and fit to be lost Angeles. They lost the angels. They are no longer Angeles. They lost it all because of failed policies and also because of the corrupted might control the Board Supervisor. So nowadays, we see Los Angeles has a lot of crime, a lot of illegal immigrants. We have to make the distance between legal immigrants and legal immigrants who don't care about the growth of our USA. So today, I would like to all of you, in the future, have support to make our city of Westminster growth and safe for our own people. Thank you very much.
Next, next speaker is Ms. Tina Tapia.
Howka, my name is Tina, and I'm a Native American from San Pasquale Band of Mission Indians. Today, to Jane, it's been a wonderful experience getting to know my ancestors in this difficult time. They have told me such wonderful things that you have done for my people. I'm here to show and tell you that your hard work and courage that you showed in your protesting will show the next generation how wrong people in the government were. The children must know. To me, you are what women stand for, freedom. You had this Hollywood platform, and you used it to make an impact, to educate people on what is happening in America. Sadly, the mistreatment of indigenous people in America is still continuing today, with no mention of Native American teaching in our schools. Jane have worked hard on half of, behalf of Native Americans and the Black Panthers in the 1960s. Fonda dove into protesting the Vietnam War, first with the formation of the Free Army Tour, FTA, with actor Donald Sutherland in 1970. I quote Jane, "It's been the same throughout history," she said. "It's takes people's, it's take people power, it takes strength in numbers." Right now, it's going to take unpredictable numbers of people who have risen up to organize, to pressure the government to do what is right, unquote. And I agree, we never needed war, and we don't need guns. We need to heal, we are fighting against each other all for money. Money is fake, we can't take money in the afterlife. And for Jane, I thank you for sharing your experience and your knowledge with us in making the world a better place. I agree with the city of LA to dedicate April 30th as Jane Fonda Day. I hope this day will educate more people on where they stand on American land. May 3rd is an Indian Flower Day, which is an old tradition among the local tribes here in Southern California. On this day, many local reservations dedicate their ceremonies with, with flowers and replace the old crosses in this time when blooming flowers and plants are the strongest. May your 3rd, may, may your 3rd of May bring your flowers that you deserve. Congratulations, Jane, and I thank you for understanding my ancestors, paying our respects to the children who lost their lives and never returned home to their families. We are Kumias, and I, and we are the forgotten Native Americans here. I'm taking the time to show my boys who we are and how far our ancestors have gotten us here today, and we thank them today for the rest of our lives. School doesn't teach the importance of our history, and that needs to change. How brave these young children must have been to be taken away from their families and how that affects many families to this day. Let's never forget, water is life. Thank you.
Next speaker is Terry Rains.
This LA County Board of Supervisor's action does not warrant expanding city resources, staff, and everyone's time to hold a special meeting on a Friday at 4:00 PM. There's no urgency, what's done is done for 2024. The time, place, and manner to oppose this was to speak against it when the LA County Supervisors voted on it at their April 23 meeting before they presented the proclamation of Jane Fonda on April 30. Only one written comment was submitted in support, and no one there spoke against it. April is recognized as Earth Month, and April 22 is Earth Day. At their April 30 meeting, LA County Supervisors presented the proclamation to Fonda proclaiming April 30th as Jane Fonda Day in LA County. The presentation in Fonda's acceptance speech centered mostly on her climate change activism since it was Earth Month. Did any of you actually watch the meetings? Because I did. One issue that Fonda spoke out against during her acceptance speech was the 2024 California Oil and Gas Well Regulations Referendum, a November ballot measure asking voters to repeal 2022 SB 1137, which places restrictions on oil and gas production facilities and wells within 3,200 feet of residences, education facilities, daycare centers, colleges, and universities, community resource centers, healthcare facilities, live-in housing, prisons and detention centers, and any building holding a public, a business open to the public, defined as health protection zones. Fonda is an LA resident, county resident, and her, county chose to honor her body of work and activism, especially related to climate change and women's rights. The staff report doesn't have the final document they voted on with Supervisor Solis added as a second, and the attachment list reads, "Proposed Resolution Denouncing Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors," period. Oops. 254,000 is not 300,000, and Black April is not celebrated, it's only commemorated. None of you have lived here in the US, were living here in the US when Hanoi Jane incident took place in '72. Two of you weren't even born yet, but I remember it well. Fonda, along with half of this nation, opposed the war and our government's handling of it. Yes, Fonda's visit to North Vietnam and the resulting photo and propaganda was horrific and outraged all of us Americans. But if LA wants to honor their 86-year-old resident for her complete body of work and activism, it is their prerogative. They represent 9.6 million people, less than 7% of those are Vietnamese. Amy, in your press conference with Nokia and calls to veterans, you fanned the flames as usual without having a real grasp of the issue. You pushed for this special meeting. Vice Mayor Ho was fine with it being on the May 22 agenda. Bottom line, this is not city business. Your constituents are sick of you wasting precious, precious city resources on issues not within your jurisdiction and using people's real pain to politically grandstand while ignoring real issues in our city. Vietnam Veterans of America will be sending their own letters directly to LA County, as will I. No need to rescind, just request that they change the proclaimed date going forward, and I am confident they will do so. And like other people have said, you know, this council's made some bad decisions and honored some bad people in the past. So I don't think this was purposeful, it was just an oversight out of ignorance, in my opinion.
Next speaker is Lan Quoc Nguyen. Next speaker is Lan Quoc Nguyen.
Lan Quoc Nguyen. I'm sorry, I wasn't sleeping. Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmember. My name is Lan Nguyen. I'm a trustee from the Gando Unified School Districts. I'm here as a business owner of this city. First of all, I want to thank the council for taking up this emergency meeting to address the issue. Some may say it's not the city business, but it is the city business because it concerned the last group of residents because the council speak up and advocate for the voice of the resident. That's what you do. And I appreciate the opportunity to come up here to thank the council for doing just that. And I also want to applaud the effort from all the elected officials across the board in speaking up on this issue, especially Assemblyman Chi Tha. He spearheaded the effort. And so Director Van Chan has contacted different organizations to lend support to our effort. I myself had launched an online petition on the change.org to petition for the rescission of the resolution by the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. In that petition, I call on the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors to rescind its resolution designated in April 30th as the Jane Fonda Day. April 30th marks the fall of Saigon in 1975, which was in violation of the Northern Army taking over the southern Vietnam in violation of the 1972 Paris Accord. Jane Fonda is the most well-known symbol of betrayal of America for cheering the northern Vietnamese military for shooting down American war plan and in holding American war prisoners captive in Hanoi. Doubling, coupling those two symbols would only activate the pain in the mood of the Vietnamese people in multiple ways and reopen the deepest wound for generations of Vietnamese, especially in light of the atrocity and the human right violation that the Vietnamese Communist regime had committed against its own people. The fact that if we call on the Board of Supervisors to rescind its most insensitive resolution is to go a long way to heal the wound in the Vietnamese people. And thank you very much for giving me the chance to express my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Fat Buie.
Good afternoon, council members. Today, I appear in front of you as the Chairman of the Vietnamese-American Federation of Southern California. First of all, I would like to commend Councilmember Amy Phan West. I think on the early morning of May 1st, you are the one who alarmed the community about this issue. And I believe you are the very first to have issued a letter, following by Senator Jan Nguyen and Assemblyman Chi Tha, and then our letter from the communities. This issue happened far away in Los Angeles County. However, it deeply hurt a lot of people, your residents, and the veterans, the U.S. Vietnam War veterans here in Westminster. And so I truly believe that the Mayor and the City Council make the right decision to hold these special meetings to address this issue because times is at an action here. We want to send the message to the Los Angeles County that we are very concerned about this issue. I needlessly need to talk about what it is about because everyone know about it. In 1972, Jane Fonda appeared in Hanoi, sitting behind the anti-aircraft guns. Why U.S. pilots is in prison and tortured nearby in prisons? Why tens of thousands of U.S. soldiers are fighting against the invasion by the Communist regime? Her act is backstabbing the U.S. troops and a betrayal to the U.S., to our nation. She does not deserve this recognition at all. And also, the fact that the county chose April 30th as the Jane Fonda Day is a slap to our community, to our veterans who are sitting right here in the audience. I do not know whether, after receiving a lot of protest letters, the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors will change their mind. But I do believe that we have the responsibility to speak up and to speak out. And I would like to commend the Westminster City Council for taking this effort today to consider a resolution. Of course, each of you, like Amy, like Janet Nguyen, let me say still, Assemblyman Chi Tha, and myself have written the letters. But the letter together as a form of the resolution of the City of Westminster is much stronger. And I would like to urge you to write such a letter. Thank you.
Next speaker is Victoria Cooper.
Yes. Yes. Today, I am Victoria Cooper. Cooper, last name MyHutburn, Vietnam Veteran Hero. Today, I want to talk through. I talk in "It's Not Good," I talk Vietnamese.
Next speaker is Jean Vesely.
Thank you, Council, City of Westminster, for allowing me to express my opinion about this recent travesty of whatever. It's hard to explain, but I just want you to know that I'm a unapologetic patriot. And in 1945, I was born in March, and my father was killed 21 days later in Germany at the end of World War II. So I became a war orphan. My older brother and I are military freaks. I love wearing cami. I don't know. Anyway, he's a retired three-star general, Air Force. I call it the chair force. But any rate, my cousin, who I was very close to in my youth, joined the Navy and became a corpsman in 1965. And he was sent to Vietnam, and was a... A corpsman in the Navy is like a medic in the army. And he was 18 years old, and he was killed in Vietnam after being there about six weeks. I dropped out of college and went to join the Navy as a corpsman. And I was told by the recruiter that I needed to submit a six-year commitment, and I was too old. I was 21 then, and I didn't want to give him that much time. So I went down the hall to the Marine Corps, and I enlisted for two years. I must say that when I was sent to Vietnam, I had no idea what to expect. But it changed my life. My first six months in country, I was in a rather secure area with razor wire compound, not unlike what they're trying to do down in Texas, I might add. But anyway, I got an opportunity to volunteer for what's called a CAP Marines, C.A.P. And I highly recommend that if you're curious about our unit in Vietnam, to go online and check it out, C.A.P. Marines. We were a special anti-insurgency units that lived in and amongst the people in the villages, in the rice paddies, the hamlets. And it was such a unique experience. We were to keep the Vietcong from stealing rice and money and people from the villages. But any rate, this thing about Jane Fonda, I don't even like using her name. It gives me a bad taste in my mouth. She's a treasonous traitor. And I came back to the United States in 1969 when they were having the Paris Peace Talks. Nixon pulled a bunch of us Marines out. And in '72, then she went to Hanoi, as people have said, and everybody pretty much knows. But it's pitiful and it's painful to have the city or the county, L.A., admonish her when she should. Thank you.
Next speaker is Devora Mariscal.
Good afternoon, Devora Mariscal. I want to thank the city staff, our police department, all the people that are away from their positions, that they could be doing other things that would be more important to Westminster for being here. I'm not a Jane Fonda fan, never have. I have compassion for those that served in the Vietnamese war. My family and friends served, and it was a terrible thing. But the last time I checked, Westminster is in the county of Orange. We're not in L.A. You could have drafted a letter and sent that off. The Vietnamese community could have put a petition out and asked for signatures and sent it. I mean, quite honestly, and I'm just going to be blunt, we have got far more things that are much more important than proclamations. I'm tired of all these proclamations. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sun Do.
Good afternoon, beloved City Council, City official. I'm so happy to see you today. Amy, Carlos, Kimberly, Charlie, Nam Quang. My name is Sun Do. I'm a Westminster resident. I live in the fourth section. So I heard someone told me today we have a resolution denouncing the resignation of April 30th as the Jane Fonda Day. I'm strongly upset, opposed. To me, that's a very bad... It's a joke. It's a very bad joke. And I will let you know why. During '72, why the hundreds of thousands of U.S. soldiers busy defending freedom for the South, and Jane Fonda went to the North, holding a big gun to anti-aircraft U.S.? In this country, we spend billions and billions, and the people, hundreds of thousands of people, sacrifice for their defense of freedom. And then, what does Jane Fonda represent? Anti-freedom. So I don't know what the reason behind the council of L.A. to change, I mean, to name, April 30th as the Jane Fonda Day. I think that's kind of very bad insubstantial for our freedom defender. So we are the leader of freedom defenders of the whole world. So why we have someone, I mean, some council, promote this kind of freedom promoter? So I'm so strongly express my concern to our beloved councils. So please, denounce them. Please. Thank you.
Last speaker is Kai Dao.
Sorry, but give me a minute. Good afternoon, everyone. Well, I wasn't planning to speak. I shouldn't be speaking, actually, because I was entrusted to file paper and proceed with the...
Please talk about the agenda today, please.
Hey, I'm talking about it.
Start out with the agenda, please.
Hey, if you're too stupid to understand why I'm saying what I'm saying, it's not my problem, okay? Let me... Don't interrupt me. I'm being very serious.
If you are not starting with your... Talking about the item, I will shut you off right now.
What right do you have to shut me off?
Please, are you talking about the... Please stop the clock. Are you talking about the agenda item or not? Are you talking about the agenda or not? This is a first warning to you. Are you talking about the agenda or not?
I am.
Okay, please, please, please. Please start with the agenda item. Go. Go ahead and start with the clock, please.
We have 20 minutes. It's my time. We have twenty minutes. It's my time. Vậy, những gì tôi đang nói có thể không làm hài lòng nhiều người Việt Nam. Just like the lady before me. Tôi không dám nói rằng tôi hiểu. Bạn biết, tôi đã đến đây vào năm 1980. Tôi xem The Deer Hunter, sinh ngày 4 tháng 6. Vậy tôi hiểu người người hùng, người người hùng Mỹ đã trở về đây, bị mắc kẹt. Vậy tôi đang ở vị trí, một vị trí để bảo vệ hoặc tôn trọng Jane Fonda. Nhưng như cô đã nói, tôi nghĩ đây là tất cả những gì bạn đang làm. Bởi vì bạn không biết những gì bạn đang làm. Bạn không hiểu vai trò của bạn, giống như cô đã nói. Đây là vấn đề của LA. Và bạn nghĩ rằng bởi vì chúng tôi là phần lớn ở Westminster, rằng chúng tôi có quyền bỏ phiếu để đưa bạn ở đây, thì bạn có thể làm bất cứ điều gì bạn muốn? Và đó là phản ứng. Bạn hiểu những gì, đó chỉ là hậu quả của những gì bạn đang làm. Bạn không thích nó? Bạn nghĩ mọi người trong cả thành phố, bạn nghĩ mọi người trong cộng đồng đang nói, thích những gì bạn đã làm? Mọi người đã đến đây, nói với bạn, giải thích với bạn. Stop it. Stop using the dias, using the council để lấy phiếu từ người Việt Nam.
Bạn đang hỏi chủ đề lại nữa, nhưng tôi để bạn đi.
Yes, đây là cùng một điều, bạn đang sử dụng vấn đề này để lấy phiếu lại. Bạn không thích LA County vì tôn trọng Jane Fonda. Bạn nghĩ mọi người trong cộng đồng thích những gì bạn đã làm với Our Yellow Flags? Tôi không nghĩ bạn quan tâm hơn tôi. Bạn không biết điều gì bạn đang làm? Bạn chỉ đang cười và bạn, bạn, bạn nên nghĩ về nó. Nếu bạn không thích, những gì LA County đã làm và nghĩ về những gì bạn đã làm. Đó là những gì tôi đang nói. Cảm ơn.
Không có hội viên tiếp theo.
Alright, thank you very much. Tôi thực sự muốn cảm ơn tất cả các bạn đã xuất hiện trong cuộc họp hôm nay và thể hiện ý kiến của bạn. Tùy cách nào, chúng tôi感激 đó, chúng tôi lắng nghe bạn. Chỉ là tôi muốn, tôi không cần phải trả lời, nhưng tôi chỉ muốn để bạn biết. Giờ đây, bạn nhận ra tại sao tôi gọi cuộc họp? Bởi vì tôi muốn trả lời cho bạn. Đầu tiên, và tôi chỉ nói một lần, tôi sẽ không repeats lại. Và hy vọng rằng bạn đã nhận được những điểm của tôi. Lý do cho, có nhiều lý do cho chúng tôi có một cuộc họp đặc biệt hôm nay. Thứ nhất, ngày 8 tháng 4 đang sắp tới. Và chúng tôi có政策 rằng nếu chúng tôi đặt đề tài vào đề tài, nó phải được đăng lên ngày 25 tháng 4. Điều này chỉ xuất hiện vài ngày trước. Do đó, nó sẽ không có cuộc họp ngày 8 tháng 4. Và nếu chúng tôi chờ đợi cuộc họp tiếp theo, nó là ngày 22 tháng 4. Loại đó sẽ không xảy ra. Now, tại sao chúng tôi gọi cuộc họp này? Bạn có thể, bạn có thể nghe nhiều người đến đây rồi. Tôi và tôi biết, cùng với các thành viên của đồng chí, chúng tôi nhận được nhiều cuộc gọi từ cộng đồng Việt Nam. Và đầu tiên, tôi muốn cảm ơn tất cả các thành viên, công nhân đồng chí của đồng chí. cùng với tôi. Điều mà bạn ở đây hôm nay, bạn đã hòa hợp, để nói về vấn đề, tại sao? Đó là điều đang phá hủy cộng đồng Việt Nam. Và cộng đồng Việt Nam, qua những năm qua, họ đã đóng góp cho thành phố Westminster. Họ là những thành viên của thành phố. Họ có quyền nói ý kiến của họ. Và chúng tôi, như nhân viên chọn, chúng tôi cần nghe họ, chúng tôi cần lắng nghe họ. Now, tôi nghe rằng bản thân tôi có thể viết thư. Nhưng nếu, nếu tôi viết thư, tôi có quyền, quyền viết thư. Nhưng đó chỉ là tôi, như mayor của thành phố Westminster, cung cấp thư này, có sức mạnh so với toàn bộ đồng chí quyết định về điều đó và yêu cầu lý do cho quyết định đó? Tôi nghĩ điều đó quan trọng hơn bản thân nếu chúng tôi có toàn bộ đồng chí. Và một lần nữa, tôi感激 mỗi, mỗi một trong họ. Now, một điều khác bạn phải nghĩ đến là vấn đề này, tôi đã ở trong văn bản nhóm. Và tôi nói với bạn trước, chúng tôi không phạm vi Prow Act. Có ba hoặc nhiều thành viên trong đồng chí ở đó. Hai trong số họ đã trả lời. Tôi quyết định bỏ qua nó. Bởi vì nếu tôi trả lời, nó sẽ là Prow Act và tôi sẽ không làm bất cứ điều gì về nó. Họ, tôi biết họ sẵn sàng để di chuyển, để di chuyển với điều này. Và tôi chắc rằng có nhiều hơn hai muốn gọi thêm cuộc họp đặc biệt. Bởi vì tôi biết rằng chúng tôi không thể chờ đến ngày 22 tháng 4 để giải quyết vấn đề. Và nhiều hơn và nhiều hơn cuộc trò chuyện đang diễn ra sẽ tạo ra Prow Act. Những gì tôi đang làm là gọi cuộc họp đặc biệt, điều đó là công vụ của tôi. Nếu thành viên đồng chí cần gọi cuộc họp, họ phải có ít nhất ba. Và không một trong chúng ta, không một thành viên đồng chí có thể liên lạc với ba người. Đó sẽ là Prow Act. Và biết rằng vấn đề này là trọng tâm, đó là những gì tôi phải làm. Đó là những gì tôi phải làm. Vậy với điều đó, tôi muốn di chuyển với các đề tài. Và tôi muốn cảm ơn công nhân thành phố, cũng như nhà quản trị thành phố, để đưa ra báo cáo. Tôi phải nói rằng khi điều này bắt đầu, vice mayor gọi tôi và yêu cầu tôi chấp nhận các đề tài. Và tôi đồng ý, không có vấn đề nào. Chọn lựa chọn có một cuộc họp đặc biệt là những gì tôi đã làm để đảm bảo rằng không có Prow Act và đảm bảo rằng chúng tôi giải quyết vấn đề sớm nhất có thể. Tôi biết rằng thành viên đồng chí Amy Van West cũng muốn có điều đó. Nhưng nếu cô muốn làm điều đó, cô phải có ba phiếu. Ba thành viên đồng chí đồng ý với điều đó. Tôi không chắc, nếu có, nhưng không cần khi tôi gọi cuộc họp đặc biệt. Giờ đây, tôi hiểu bạn lo lắng và bạn nói rằng điều này không liên quan đến thành phố Westminster. Đó là. Có một số thành viên trong thành phố Westminster đã đề cập vấn đề này với tôi, với các thành viên đồng chí khác. Now, trước khi tôi di chuyển, tôi muốn đi trước và gọi vice mayor để giải quyết vấn đề. Đầu tiên với bạn.
Cảm ơn mayor và cảm ơn bạn vì bạn đã chấp nhận. Khi tôi yêu cầu quyết định, tôi感激 đó. Ok, vậy, tôi tin rằng đó là ngày 1. Ngày 1 tháng 4, tôi thức dậy rất sớm. Tôi đọc một bài báo. Tôi quên mất nguồn gốc. Nhưng nó liên quan đến Jane Fonda và cách, điều gì đã xảy ra tại nhà giám đốc thành phố LA. Tôi đoán ngày trước. Và tôi khá ngạc nhiên. Và ngay lập tức, sau, ngay sau đó, tôi đọc một văn bản nhóm vốn bao gồm bản thân tôi và hai người khác. Và người đầu tiên đáp lại văn bản đó là Amy Van West. Và sau đó, tôi là người thứ hai. Và sau đó, ngay lập tức sau đó, theo văn bản của tôi, tôi nhắn với toàn bộ nhóm và tôi nói, xin, nếu bạn là thành viên của đồng chí thành phố Westminster, xin đừng trả lời như chúng tôi đã có. Và đã trả lời và tôi không muốn phạm vi Prow Act. Và khi tôi nhận thấy, sau khi tôi nhắn đó, bởi vì tôi nhận thấy mayor Chi Charlie cũng bao gồm trong văn bản nhóm. Vậy, bạn biết, tôi nghĩ như một nhân viên chọn, chúng tôi muốn hành động, nhưng chúng tôi không muốn phản ứng một cách riêng. Chúng tôi muốn đảm bảo rằng chúng tôi có thời gian để thông báo và, bạn biết, muốn làm điều đúng đắn như một cơ thể và bạn biết. Vậy tôi không thể nói cho sự kiện của cô Amy Van West, nhưng tôi chỉ có thể告诉你我做了什么, ok? Và đó là ngày 1 tháng 4. Vậy tôi chuẩn bị một chút, nó là một lời nói mà tôi muốn đọc cho bạn. Đầu tiên, nó, và sau đó, theo lời nói đó là một chút cá nhân. Vậy, ngày 30 tháng 4 là ngày Board of Supervisors của LA chọn tuyên bố là ngày của Jane Fonda. Vậy đó là, họ tuyên bố ngày 30 tháng 4, mặc dù nó xảy ra ngày 23, khi họ quyết định. Vậy, như những giọt nước của nhiều, nhiều người Việt Nam, của những người hùng Mỹ và Việt Nam và nhiều người khác đang tràn ngập với niềm buồn vì chúng tôi đã vừa có ngày kỷ niệm Black April, ngày trước. Là một ngày buồn bã cho người Việt Nam. Những người coi chính họ là Republic of Vietnam, không chỉ ở Mỹ, mà khắp nơi trên thế giới, cũng như những người vẫn còn "trở lại" Việt Nam, phải sống dưới chế độ communists. Tại sao? Bởi vì Việt Nam rơi vào tay communists. Ngày nào? 30 tháng 30, năm 1975. Nhiều người hùng chiến tranh Việt Nam, cũng như những người Mỹ, sống với những vết thương cảm và những vết thương về thể chất của cuộc chiến. Và họ có PTSD từ sự thương thương. Chúng tôi, như đồng chí thành phố, đã cố gắng làm nhiều nhất có thể để giúp họ chữa lành, bao gồm, nhưng không giới hạn, ngày 19 tháng 4. Tôi chắc bạn all nhớ, đó không lâu. Chúng tôi tuyên bố rằng ngày 19 tháng 4 sẽ là ngày của những người hùng chiến tranh Việt Nam. Chúng tôi tuyên bố là ngày về nhà, đúng? Ngày 19 tháng 4, tôi xin lỗi, tôi đã viết 19, yes. Không chỉ họ không nhận được chào mừng nhà, họ về nhà với phẫn vã. Và đương nhiên, tôi là một cô gái nhỏ và tôi biết tôi không ở đây. Bạn đúng, Terry Rains, tôi không ở đây vào năm 1972. Nhưng tôi đã nghe từ những người hùng Mỹ. Và tôi đã nghe loud và rõ ngày 19 tháng 4, khi tất cả các bạn đều xuất hiện và chia sẻ suy nghĩ và kinh nghiệm của bạn với tôi, với chúng tôi. Không chỉ họ không nhận được chào mừng nhà, họ về nhà với phẫn vã trên khuôn mặt và phải隐瞒 identities của họ như một người hùng Việt Nam bởi có sự thù hận đối với họ bởi người Mỹ. Yes, tất cả các bạn Việt Nam và những người hùng Mỹ, bạn là, là những người lịch sử. Và tôi cảm ơn nhiều bạn vẫn còn sống. Nhưng lần nữa, nhiều không. Và chúng tôi cũng có thể nghiên cứu và đọc về nó. Đối với tôi, tôi đã cả. Tôi đã nói với những người hùng Mỹ và tôi cũng nghiên cứu. Tôi tin tất cả sự thù hận này đối với những người hùng Mỹ, những người hùng Mỹ và phân chia giữa mọi người đều do người họ đã gọi Hanoi Jane. Vậy tuyên bố một ngày trong sự tôn trọng của cô Fonda vào ngày sinh nhật của một sự kiện rất quan trọng và đau đớn. Yes, là không thể nói ít hơn, về sự mất mạng của sự sống của cả hai người Việt Nam và người hùng chiến tranh Việt Nam trong và sau chiến tranh Việt Nam. Đó bao gồm những người hùng Việt Nam, những người hùng Mỹ. Vậy để tôn trọng ai đó đã rất bất đồng về quan điểm của cô đối với cuộc chiến và cô được coi là "giúp và chống lại kẻ thù của Mỹ", tôi đang quoting từ những gì tôi đã đọc. Xin lỗi. Và điều đó là một câu, cô nên bị trêu bạo trong mắt nhiều người hùng Việt Nam. Làm sao chúng ta tiếp tục để Jane Fonda trở thành, theo thuật ngữ ngày hôm nay, một người phản ái, đã gây thù hận đối với những người hùng Mỹ trong 52 năm qua? Nếu bất cứ điều gì, chúng tôi cần lời nói chân thành nhất cho những người hùng Mỹ, từ cô Jane Fonda và không nhấn mạnh những gì cô đã làm sai. Vì đó là một cú nhổ vào khuôn mặt chúng ta. Hôm nay, chúng tôi, như đồng chí, shall I say, bản thân tôi, được chấp nhận bởi bởi mayor Chi Charlie. Tôi đang yêu cầu rằng đồng chí thành phố Chúng tôi đang yêu cầu giám đốc thành phố LA trên cơ sở công khai với quyết định để sửa đổi lời khai nay, để tôn trọng hoặc để đặt ngày 30 tháng 4 là ngày của Jane Fonda. Và trên một lưu ý cá nhân, trời ơi, điều này quá lâu rồi, nhưng tôi nghĩ tôi sẽ chia sẻ với bạn. Và đây là điều tôi cũng muốn nói với cô Janice Hong. Như một cô gái trẻ, trong những tuổi 20, tôi được tôn trọng. Tôi nhận được giấy chứng nhận từ Board of Supervisor của thành phố LA. Yes. Trên board đó là bố của bạn. Và tên của bố của bạn là người giám đốc thành phố thứ tư, xin lỗi, thành phố thứ hai, Board of Supervisor thành phố LA. Ông ấy served từ 1952 đến 1992. Như một cô gái Việt Nam trẻ, đã lớn lên ở Los Angeles, tôi đã ở một tuổi đáng kể. Yes, tôi đã nhận được một thưởng, tôi nhận được giấy chứng nhận bởi Board of Supervisor thành phố LA. Người mà tôi nhắm tay, tôi không nhớ tất cả họ, nhưng người duy nhất tôi nhớ là bố của cô Janice Hong, người là giám đốc thành phố hiện tại, phục vụ thành phố thứ tư, anh Kenneth Hong. Như một thông điệp cho Board of Supervisor thành phố LA, những gì chúng tôi làm như một nhân viên chọn, chúng tôi sẽ có ảnh hưởng tích cực hoặc tiêu cực cho一代青, bây giờ và nhiều hơn nữa. Tôi nhìn vào anh Kenneth Hong về, tôi nghĩ đó là khoảng 39 năm trước. Vâng, ông ấy phục vụ 39 năm, nhưng tôi nghĩ điều này xảy ra khi tôi gặp ông ấy. Ông ấy probably trong những năm 80, năm 80. Và qua thời gian khoảng 20 năm, tôi tìm kiếm ông ấy. Tôi tìm kiếm ông ấy để thấy. I Googled him to see what seat he ran for, what he was up to. And so, yes, it does leave an impression. What you do on that board does speak for you. So don't think that you're just confined to just the L.A. territory and the amount of Vietnamese, the number of Vietnamese people living there. But remember, I once lived in Los Angeles, that's where I grew up. So we do move around and we take our experiences with us. So when I Googled him to find that he passed away in 1992, I did say a prayer for him. So all of us, we are influencers, whether you like it or not. So to proclaim Ms. Jane Fonda to April 30th as the day, Ms. Jane Fonda Day, that really is a slap in the face. And also, I read your resolution, and I understand that you could decide to honor whoever you want to honor, but why on that day? So that's quite insensitive to the rest of us Vietnamese, Vietnamese Americans, American veterans, to choose that very day while you should be shedding tears and should be commemorating Black Friday along with us. And on your resolution, how could you say that you were inspired by her experiences during the Vietnam War? What were you inspired about? So I am sorry, but I think that you, you really need to rescind. You need to find a different way. I don't know what it is, that would be up to your board, but I would like our city council to together denounce this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ho, and as a second to this item, I'm going to speak about it, and then after that, I will invite each and every one of you. I guess that I don't need to talk about the characteristic of Jane Fonda anymore because all of you here already spoke during the oral communication already. I heard all of you against, except for one. So there's no point to, to talk about that. But one thing is, I think that, I don't know, you know about this meeting, but I don't know that you have a chance to read the report that staff put together. It's a very detailed report, and it's very, it has a lot of information, which is the information that you need to have to decide on what you need to be done, what needs to be done. I just want to read part of it, just part of it. And I want, again, thank you staff for putting it together. Proclaiming a day in honor of Ms. Fonda on the anniversary of a significant and painful event is dismissive of the experience and losses of the Vietnamese people and Vietnam War veterans during and after the Vietnam War. Since the news broke that Jane Fonda Day was declared on April 30th, multiple members of the Westminster City Council and Vietnamese leaders have been contacted by Vietnamese and veteran community members, this is from staff report, who are outraged and offended by Jane Fonda Day. And Southern California is home of the largest Vietnamese diaspora in the world, preliminary in Orange County's Little Saigon community in the city of Westminster, Grand Grove, Santana, Fatn Valley, and followed by Los Angeles County, which makes the designation of Jane Fonda Day on a date that resonate heavily with the Vietnamese population extremely insensitive to the local Vietnamese community. With that, I know that we need to address this item, this matter at hand as quickly as possible. And I do hope that the Board of Supervisors of Orange, of L.A. County, they would listen to that, and they would rescind this resolution immediately. I agree with you all here. We are hurt. We live in pain. That's why. I want to thank the City of Westminster, united with the community, Vietnamese community. We just had the Black April 30th. You can see, if you go there, you see a lot of people. It was on the regular day, the day, working days, but if you are out there, you see that we have a lot of people, different, and the media is out there too. We have veterans, American veterans, American Vietnamese, Vietnam veterans out there too, joining us. There's no doubt that the pain are still with us. I was a young boy at the time. I know what I have to go through. Some of you probably didn't, you know, never have gone through that kind of situation. As I recall, I can't even speak about it. I just hope that you are with us. You have to look at the pain that we have to go through. A hundred thousand of people have lost their life during the time they find, they go and look for freedom. We, the lucky people, are here, and therefore, we do everything that we can to appreciate you, the American people, have accepted us to this nation. What the Board of Supervisor of L.A. did a couple of days ago, it's unacceptable. We can't allow to have this without voicing our opinions, strongly voicing and asking them to withdraw or rescind that resolution. And we here, again, I want to thank you, the council members here. I can call the special meeting, and if they are not concerned about it, they don't have to be here. But they were here. That means what? They agree that this is the matter that need to be taken care of. And again, together with Vice Mayor Ho, I would like to ask the council to denounce the resolution that put forth designation of April 30th as Jane Fonda Day by the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors and request for immediate resistance. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may move to approve the agenda, but I know it's still early, yes.
We need to hear from the council member. Now, I would like to call for Councilmember West for District One.
So do you mind if I go last, Mr. Mayor?
All right, you can go last, but then next time, I, I will not follow the pattern that we are going, but you have to allow me to do that too. So next is Councilmember Menzel.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I heard all the comments from some other residents here, so thank you all for being here, taking the time out of your Friday to be here. There were some comments made that, you know, this doesn't affect, this particular subject doesn't affect Westminster. You know, it does because, you know, here, here as city council members, you know, here in the city of Westminster, we represent everybody here in the community. We represent, here in Westminster, a lot of Vietnamese Americans. Here in Westminster, we have a lot of American Vietnam War veterans. So yes, here we represent them, and we, this issue here is very sensitive to those people who live here in the city of Westminster. So it does. So I'm with the community, I'm with the sentiment, how hurtful the, at these actions were from the L.A. County Supervisors. So I'm 100% with the community on this one, and we must approve this resolution. But let me just say this, and we need to, you need to remember this, is that we here in Westminster, we don't, do not have authority, we don't have a jurisdiction over what another city or another county does. If they want to recognize Ms. Fonda, that's totally up to them. They can do that if they so wish. But I would think, I would like to think that somebody, either the supervisors themselves or somebody on their staff, would be smart enough or have enough knowledge to understand, to know what the April 30th, the date of April 30th means to American veterans and Vietnamese Americans. If they didn't, before they chose that day, a simple Google search would have helped. I just, I would like to think somebody out there is smart enough to figure that out. I've been trying to call, I've called multiple times to Supervisor Harvest's office to try to get an answer why April 30th day was chosen, and have not been able to get a call back from anybody on their staff. I just cannot understand why that day was chosen, and we must try to figure that out and try to get an answer. So we also need to be mindful that what is the goal here? The goal that we have here is to get them to either, for, I don't think that they're going to rescind it, but the goal here is to have them be respectful and possibly choose a different date, because this date is very sensitive and very emotional to a lot of people. So that is the goal. To me, that is the goal for us to do that, and I surely hope that this letter will help in that, get that goal. But we must also do, as responsible residents and also council members, do what some of the speakers were talking about, petitions, sign petitions, make calls, send emails, have, talk to representatives, as Senator Nguyen and Assemblymember Todd are already doing, talk to them, get them to, to get out there and try to get some answers, try to get some contact with supervisors. That's the goal. That's the goal that we need to do. So I want to make sure that I'm clear, that people understand that I am 100% behind our community. What is not the goal here in Westminster, and we need to understand the history in Westminster, that here in Westminster, we tend, some people here, some elected officials tend to, I'm not making any claims on certain people, but what has happened here in the past, and to me, that being a Westminster resident for, for since the eighties, a long time, is that some people take an issue and totally use it for malice intentions to garner votes, to garner support. And that, to me, is a sad thing, because there's a lot of manipulation in the, of the Vietnamese residents here in the city. The goal here is to, to have these supervisors change the date, not to be out there in YouTube's and the Vietnamese media and stirring up chaos and creating all this division. That is not the goal. The goal is to get this done and get these supervisors to change the date. If they would rescind it, great, because they need to have somebody smart enough to understand the history of the Vietnam War, the history that Ms. Jane Fonda has, what happened in 1972. You would think that somebody in the supervisor's office would be able to know that, or at least do some little bit of research. The goal here is not to make this a political, a political issue here. The other thing that we need to be here as responsible council members is, we need to be mindful of the, of the funds that our, our city spends. I do not buy, with all due respect to all my colleagues here, I do not buy the, the argument of we needed, we couldn't do this next meeting. We could have, and I agree that this needs to be done in a timely manner, we could have easily have walked this item onto the next agenda by council majority vote to place it on the agenda that day on, on May 8th. We could have done that, we can legally have done that. We have spent so much staff resources, time, unless our city attorney is going to pro bono his time here today, we have to pay for his city attorney's services. We have to pay for everybody to be here. The other thing too is, city manager, from what I understand, we're shorthanded. Our, our city clerk is ill. We have city manager pulling double duty over here. We don't even have our, our agenda items, our agenda ready for our next week's meeting. When is it going to be done? Is it going to work tomorrow? Are you going to work Sunday to get it done? Come on, it's like, you need to be mindful of staff, mindful and respectful of the time that it takes to put these agenda items together. But I'm 100% behind our Vietnamese community. I'm 100% behind our American Vietnam veterans. I'm 100% in agreement that we need to send this resolution to the, to the supervisors, and we need to continue to try to make a connection with them, call them, email them, sign the petition, do whatever we can to make them understand that they need to change the date, at least change the date, if not rescind the whole thing entirely. So that is my piece. I hope that I didn't offend anybody, but I think that we need to be, also be responsible caretakers of the, of the finances of the city as well.
Mayor, yeah, I just address that.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to say that I want to be clear that, I know you mentioned that, you know, the L.A. Orange County, I mean, the L.A. Supervisor could choose another day, but I, I just want to remind you that on the resolution, when they mentioned that they honor Ms. Fonda, as I stated before, for her work or for her stance regarding the Vietnam War era, inspired by her experience during the Vietnam War era, all that needs to be struck.
Correct.
Because she did not do that.
I don't think we have the time to speak yet, so can we do the agenda, the resolution later?
Excuse me, you're not running, you're not running the meeting, please.
Because last, Mayor, last time you told me I can't speak until later.
Let the mayor be mayor, please. So thank you, that's all I want to say, because, yes.
No, Mayor, can I, can you continue, please?
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted, because, you know, your point was made very loud and clear, and it's really a good point, and I just wanted to add to that, that if they, and it is their prerogative to choose another day to honor her, but we would then again go back to the drawing board, we would fight, we would again, you know, really incite, be incited when she's being honored for anything that has to do with Vietnam War. So I, I would like all that for them to not even mention. Thank you.
Mayor, can I, she, she's directing it to me, so can I respond?
Put a quick please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm 100% in agreement with you. I make that point that, yes, they need to be, do some search at the history of what she did during that era and recognize that the sensitivity, the insensitivity, I should say, that, but by them putting that on that resolution. So I'm 100% in agreement with you. Thank you for pointing that out.
Next is Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would
First of all, I would like to, actually, I totally agree with Councilmember Menzel about, uh, we can easily walk on the, an item to the next agenda. But, uh, but, uh, I think, um, this is a time-sensitive issue. We should have take swift action, and I can understand that why Vice Mayor Ho and Mayor Chi Charlie want to, uh, to call for the special meeting today. And, um, thank you, staff and, uh, and council members that agree to, to be, um, uh, here on this day to, um, resolve this issue of Jane Fonda. You know what, um, for whatever, um, for all the, the opinions that I have listened during the oral communication, um, I think we done, um, the right thing. I totally agree and support this resu, this, uh, resolution. Thank you. Are you, are you back?
All right, thank you, Councilmember Nguyen. Next is Councilmember West.
Thank you. Good evening, I guess this evening, Council, Mayor, staff and the public. Thank you so much for being here. It's so vital that you guys do your public duty, which is coming here voicing your grievances regarding the LA County Supervisor appointing April 30th as Jane Fonda Day. So, before, I, when I learned about this atrocity on April 30th, I immediately called the city manager for a special city council meeting to discuss taking bold action against the denigration of this sacred day. So, I want to take this moment to bring clarity to this situation because a lot of people have brought it to my attention. So, I talked to the city manager, Christine, and I asked her, we need to bring this into special meeting. And I asked her, what do I need to do to get approval for the special meeting? She said, you need three person as a council. So, I called Ms. Kimberly and asked her if she would like to make this into a special meeting, call for a special meeting. First, she was reluctant because she said she wanted to do, the only time she can put on the agenda was May 22nd, which is too late, and I convinced her that that is too long. This, this is an urgent matter, that we need to take action right away. And finally, we talked a little bit, and she said, yes, if the mayor is okay with it, I will be okay with it. So, then I called Christine, the city manager, and asked her if she can call the mayor so we don't, and with her recommendation to not violate the Brown Act, she will call the mayor. And so, with that in mind, uh, I was like, great, we got the special meeting. And then yesterday, when agenda was posted publicly on the, on the website, I realized only Kimberly and Charlie's name on there. You know what? It's unfortunate, you know, that they didn't put my name because I was thinking, those who brought it up should have their name on there. But mainly, I'm happy that everyone came out today for the purpose of addressing Jane Fonda Day, and that's the main reason why we're here. So, it's important that you guys are here. So, with that clarity, I want to bring the tension back to this, uh, resolution declaration that LA County has declared. So, I call upon the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisor to rescind their action making April 30th Jan, Jane Fonda Day. April 30th is sacred to Vietnamese American as that is the day of the fall of Saigon. There are many memorial and gathering as every April 30th in memorial and prayers for those Vietnamese and American killed by the communists. Picking April 30th for Jane Fonda Day is like dancing on their graves and pouring salt in an open wound. I urge the Board of Supervisor to rescind their designation of April 30th as Jane Fonda Day. April 30th holds immense significance for the Vietnamese community and our veteran community as it, it marks a day of remembrance for the pain and loss during, enduring during the communist takeover. I respectfully call on the Los Angeles Board of Supervisor to rescind the resolution accordingly, honoring the sacrifices made by our veterans and the respecting the sentiments of our community. For my critics, your lack of experience and understanding, particularly of those who fleeing South Vietnam to escape communism in the middle of the night or enduring torture or facing the darkness of re-education camps is evident. Tonight, May 3rd, the city of Westminster must confront these issues as they profoundly affect not only the Vietnamese community, but also the Vietnamese American veterans. And I just want to let those critic knows, we care for the homeless, we care for fixing potholes, we care for the finances of the city. But what I'm saying is that we can chew gum and walk at the same time, and I know all of you guys have done that. Today, this is so very important for our Vietnamese veteran and what Jane Fonda did and the way they treat, as she treat them so badly and torture them and imprison them through leaking the information to our communist, uh, Ho Chi Minh regime. So, with that, she got her nickname Hanoi Jane. So, I'm speaking up today, not only for our veteran, but for our Vietnamese community. So, if those critics don't like us calling this special meeting, they need to take it up with our veteran and our Vietnamese community. So, I'm not here to apologize that we have this meeting because I'm fighting for our veteran, and I will always fight for them because of what she mistreat, what she's done. And the legacy she has put, choosing April 30th as Jane Fonda Day is a disgrace, disgrace to our veteran and our Vietnamese community. So, I would not apologize for having this day today. And then also, Mr. Mayor, I noticed that on the resolution, whereas while the Westminster City Council respects the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisor desire to honor who and what they wish, the LA Board of Supervisor Declaration of April 30th as Jane Fonda Day is inappropriate and culturally sensitive, overshadowing and diminishing this important day and remembrance in the Vietnamese American community and choosing instead to promote an individual whose action or well-known as having helped further the cause of communist regime. I, I like that, but I honestly think the language is a little too soft. So, it's inappropriate, maybe the words we should use is despicable, despicable. Thank you. Despicable, so if we can change that word, is inappropriate, say, is completely despicable, or whatever strong language you want to use, city attorney. But I think the community want to let the LA County understand their voice and hear their concerns and their pain, and we will speak it in the whereas resolution to make sure the LA County Board of Supervisor understand. But also, I've been calling the Board of Supervisor over there, and Ms. Bagger is the only Republican Supervisor over there, surrounded by the socialist Supervisor. So, if you guys want to support, support Ms. Bagger over there Supervisor, please call her. And I, I know that she's supposed to return my call some, some today or tomorrow. So, I encourage you guys to go do that, right? On my Facebook, Amy Fan West, you will see all the contact emails and phone number of those Supervisor. Also, I have a script of what you can copy and paste your name and email them with. So, please do that because your voice is important, and we will send today this resolution as the council will approve to send it to, with a stronger language. With that, if the council approved the stronger language, I motion to approve with that.
You guys said, Kimberly, Vice Mayor Ho was asking me earlier, and I stopped that. So, if you want to, um, I, I can honor you for that.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, I think that our, you know, we need to be professional as a city council. We cannot, uh, you know, write in a way that we are going to be looked down upon. So, I think there's a process, there's a, you know, a way to go about changing their mind, appealing to the body, the people of the council members, I mean, the Supervisors of the LA, LA Supervisors. But we should keep our verbiage very professional. So, I disagree with that. I don't think we want to, um, shall I say, have this verbal attack upon them, you know? Because our, our, what, what's, what are we setting out to do? We are setting ourselves out to, you know, ask them to change where, in, in essence, we're asking them to, on behalf of our residents, our, our people, our, the people who are hurt by this action, we're asking them to please, you know, understand and change, change the day, change what they, how they honor her, et cetera. If we put that kind of language in there, I don't think it is, it's, it's a, you know, bad reflection on our city council, and I would not have that.
I agree with you.
So, no, I keep it that way.
Mayor, can I have a few words, please?
I hear two difference, okay? I believe that Councilmember West asking to modify the one word in the resolution. And I heard that from the Vice Mayor. Now, we have not got any, um, motion on the floor. I'd like to start with you because you asked for that, what's your motion? Do you want to make a motion on that?
Yes, I do. As I stated earlier, I'd like to motion to approve this resolution the way it is.
Good, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second.
I substitute motion.
Motion to that.
I do.
Okay, please.
So, I motion as I hear, I heard tonight, the resident, the Vietnamese community and the American veterans, your frustration, and this is a time where we use the word despicable. It's in the vocabulary, it's in the dictionary, if you guys look it up. It's appropriate. It's just a stronger word. If you use the word inappropriate, come on, are we going to play like that again? We need to send a message to let them understand that that day is despicable. So, please understand that. So, therefore, they should change to another day. We have 365 days, right? Jane Fonda and the Supervisor there can choose any, any day except for, uh, April 30th, maybe May 1st, right? Uh, and I know our veteran would like that. But the thing is that we heard your guys' voice today and the word.
What is the motion?
So, my motion, my substitute motion, so can I, I have the floor.
Well, hurry up.
Oh, wow, I never rush you.
Yeah, well, I'm rushing you.
That's very inappropriate.
Okay, please, go ahead.
That's inappropriate.
I think that you, you've been talking about this already.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, my motion is.
Your substitute motion, right?
Substitute motion is to use the word despicable. It is in the Weber dictionary, the Webster.
Is there a second to the substitute motion? Hearing none, so the substitute motion fail. Now, uh, we have a motion on the floor, please call for the vote, please.
They're weak. Sorry.
That was a motion made by Vice Mayor Ho, seconded by Councilmember Manzo, and that is to adopt a resolution entitled. A resolution entitled, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Westminster, California, denouncing the designation of April 30th as Jane Fonda Day by the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. So, roll call, vote. Councilmember, sorry, Councilwoman Fan West?
You know what? Before I vote, I'm going to say, for the sake of this resolution. Excuse me, I have the floor, the mayor, you have the floor.
Please, 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 please.
Be the mayor, thank you.
Let her, let, let her finish. Okay, go ahead.
So, with what I mentioned earlier, I will fight for our veteran and our Vietnamese community, and the word we should use is despicable. So, I will continue to use that, and I'll put it in my letter for you guys on behalf of Councilwoman Westminster. But this, all of us will sign and we'll keep it as inappropriate, okay? So, I will vote yes just for that, but I will make another letter and send to them. Thank you so much.
Okay, next.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes, uh, I won't make a statement right now.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, Mayor, can I, can I continue? I asked for a moment.
Wait a minute, can I, give me a. Well, before, uh, council agenda, and I know that we have, the next regular meeting is on Wednesday, May 8th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. I'd like to go ahead and recognize you for the.
Thank you, Mayor. Like I said, it's very, I pretty, I find it very sad that Councilmember West, you can see her out there, very being disrespectful to this council and to this mayor, this meeting is not over.
Councilmember West, can you come back?
This meeting is not over.
I think that we are not done with the meeting yet, please. Then, then you can.
It's a pretty sad representation of your, of your residents that this Miss Councilmember West calls people names just because they don't agree with her. She is a, she is a very disrespectful and sadly, um, very sad and very stain on this council and this city, so, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We need to act professionally. I mean, I do agree with you. Next, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Um, I wanted to respond, um, to Ms. Amy Fan West, who probably recounted the event of our phone call, um, of her phone call to me. I believe it was, it was not correctly, so I want to correct her on that. Is when she called me, asking me to, uh, vote for a special meeting, I told her, I said that I, I wanted to educate her on the criteria of when it would qualify for a special meeting. I did say that, but it is up to the mayor because the mayor does not need three votes, he could call the meeting. Thank you.
Also, I, I'd like to, uh, pick you back. I believe that when she make the comments, she said she called the, the city, uh, manager on April 30th. I believe that she called me on May 1st, I didn't pick up the phone because I don't want to be Brown Act, and I know that they were talking on May 1st, not on April 30th. Am I correct, uh, city manager? Just state the fact.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's what I say.
You said April 30th, so I, you know.
I say the 30th, I was informed. Let me read to you again, I don't think you heard it. So, I say, when I learned about the atrocity of April 30th, I immediately call, I didn't say a date or a time, but I called the city manager.
That you call on the April 30th, okay, that's what I take.
No, I did not say that.
All right, thank you very much. So, the next meeting is going to be on May 8th at 6 o'clock, meeting adjourned.